All right, I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, our first order of business is mighty important. We are celebrating one of our best who has, is retiring. And Joyce Carter, would you please just come up here? We want to, we're going to have the proclamation for you in just a few moments, but I'm going to read it and then each of us can make comments and we'll get pictures and all kinds of stuff. And we have a huge crowd because we're all here to celebrate the difference you've made for Montgomery County. All right, so it truly is our great pleasure to honor you, Joyce, on the occasion of your retirement from Montgomery County after three and a half years. And we say this wholeheartedly, public service is a particularly notable career choice. And former Secretary of State Condoleezza Rice said, "There's no greater challenge and no greater honor than to be in public service." And I believe everyone in this room would totally agree with that statement. Montgomery County has been committed to providing high-quality services that benefit all the residents of the county since its founding in 1803. You weren't here then, I'm not suggesting.
No, no.
But you began your career in December with us in 2018, and you started as the Director of Human Resources. You had earned a VA in Liberal Arts from the University of Connecticut, did not know that. And the Masters in Counseling and Business from Wright State University, so we're both Wright State grads, didn't know that. You are a true public servant, and I mean that with every cell of my being. I've witnessed it day in, day out, month in, month out. So that is the highest compliment that we can bestow upon you. You have been an incredibly valuable member of the Montgomery County team and this community. And whereas after nearly 15 years serving the citizens of our communities, we want to wish you, and we truly mean this, continued joy and happiness in preparing for your next phase of life. I know there's great, you know, this is just the end of one chapter, but the beginning of a whole another chapter to celebrate. So on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, on this 15th day of July 2022, we do hereby recognize, honor, and congratulate you for your outstanding service to the citizens of Montgomery County. We truly wish you much joy in the new life and opportunities that retirement will offer. And we absolutely say you have to keep in touch. You're not going away permanently, okay? We have to let us know all the good times and all the good things happening because you will be sorely missed by all of us for whom you have interacted.
Thank you very much.
All right. So others, I know you want to chime in.
Yeah.
Commissioners, Michael?
Okay, yeah. Well, you know, thank you for the years you've been here, and no matter any kind of question I had or concern, I could call you just like that and you had answers or else you did research on it. We really appreciate it. But you know what? I don't want to see any tears because you're going to be holding little babies here in just a couple days. So, good for you, good for you. You're going to enjoy every moment of that.
Joyce, it's hard to believe it was only three and a half years, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, we went through a lot in these last three and a half years, and you were part of the team. Michael, I know appreciated you being part of the team and responding to emergency after emergency after emergency. You were there. And, you know, it's, we're sad to see you go, but also happy for what you're going to be doing. And I said it to you this morning, I want to say it again publicly, we're very thankful that you have been a mentor to our young women that are in our program. And, you know, that's so important. And for you to take the time to do that means a lot. And so, thank you. I doubt if we'll be able to get you next round, but who knows, right?
I know.
So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Well, I'll go last, Joyce. I'm not going to embarrass you.
Okay.
I just want to tell you thank you. You have been a rock in my leadership team. And you have led us through, from an HR standpoint, through some of the most difficult times in the county's history. And especially the work that you've done during COVID, all of the different policies that came down from the federal government and from the state that had to be implemented. So, from the bottom of my heart, and I consider you a friend, thank you. And from all of us in the administration, we all will miss you greatly, but we know we can just, if we can interrupt little man, we can, we can, we can call you and say, "Joyce, what do you think about that?" Your mentorship, as Debbie mentioned, is huge, not only from the young people, but from the rest of the team, and I think that's evident from the team that's here today. So, HR team, would you stand up, please? Give a round of applause for Joyce.
HR team. Would you like to say anything? Do I get three minutes?
You can have as much.
Sure, if you want.
If you have as much time as you want.
I don't need three minutes. I need to thank you all for your support, your constant support, especially Mr. Culver. It's been tremendous. It's been an opportunity of a lifetime to work with all of you. And to work with all of you, I have a great team, and they're going to continue to carry on the good work. I wish you much continued success because you deserve it. You guys work very hard for this community, and everything you do shows, and it's been an honor to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you, Joyce. Pictures?
Yes, we're going to get photos.
Too bad we don't have like a fake proclamation.
Where do you want us to go? They want us up there. Come on up, Joyce.
We're not until after, if that's okay.
Okay.
Oh, after, okay.
Aw, she has to go get tissues.
Okay. We always roll with it, so we'll just delay the further celebration. All right, tough, tough act to follow, County Engineer, but bringing your exciting business.
She left, I was going to say something too, but I will say.
Oh, well, wait till she comes back.
Okay. But, yeah, Joyce and her staff have always been very helpful to us, to my office, as well as a separate elected official, so.
Right.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Okay. We have a number of resolutions for you today. The first is Resolution 22-1092, to reject the bid for the 2022 pavement marking program for various county and township roads. 1093 is to set the date of August 2nd, 2022, for the viewing, and August 9th, 2022, for the hearing for the Chute Mill Road reconstruction project in Harrison Township. 1094 is to authorize a cost-sharing agreement with Washington Township for installation of a landscaping system at the Mad River Road, Alex Bell Road Roundabout Project in Washington Township. And then we have a couple of authorizations for LPA federal local let project agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation. 1095 is for Frederick Pike Resurfacing Project, and 1096 is for the Mad River Road Resurfacing Project. Then we have several purchase and acquisition of permanent and/or temporary construction easement approvals. 1097 is for Astoria Road Culvert Replacement Project in German Township, and 1098 is for the Airway Road Bridge Replacement Project in the city of Riverside. And then finally, we have some resolutions for road closings. 1099 is Philadelphia Drive between Valerie Arms Drive and Garvin Road lasting approximately three days. 1100 is Philadelphia Drive between Valerie Arms Drive and West Nottingham Road lasting approximately 10 days. And 1101 is for Manning Road between Boomershine Road and Anthony Road lasting approximately six days.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff?
Commissioners, before I go to the County Sheriff, Paul, did you want to say, any comments with Joyce?
Joyce, I was going to say, I said comments while you were gone, so.
I just said, I thank you and your staff for the help you always give us, a separate elected office whenever we need it, so I appreciate that, and congratulations, enjoy retirement.
Should we go ahead and do the pictures now, or?
The proclamation is here, right?
Okay.
Okay, why don't we do that so if the crowd doesn't want to stay for the whole week?
I can't imagine they don't want to stay.
I know, it's hard to imagine, but why don't we do that now, so Joyce come up?
Exactly. Yeah.
You're right in the middle, Matt. It's beautiful. That color.
Yes, hi.
Okay. Whoops. We good? Can you come up front, too?
I'm sorry, I want to make this the most excellent picture.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So, we're going.
We'll get off ones.
Whatever you say. Well. I suppose, Michael, they don't like, I know you're outnumbered, but. All right, ready?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff?
Commissioners, before I go to the County Sheriff, Paul, did you want to say, any comments with Joyce?
Joyce, I was going to say, I said comments while you were gone, so.
I just said, I thank you and your staff for the help you always give us, a separate elected office whenever we need it, so I appreciate that, and congratulations, enjoy retirement.
Should we go ahead and do the pictures now, or?
Yeah.
The proclamation is here, right?
Okay.
Okay, why don't we do that so if the crowd doesn't want to stay for the whole week? I can't imagine they don't want to stay. I know, it's hard to imagine, but why don't we do that now, so Joyce come up?
Exactly. Yeah.
You're right in the middle, Matt. It's beautiful. That color.
Yes, hi.
Okay. Whoops. We good? Can you come up front, too?
I'm sorry, I want to make this the most excellent picture.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So, we're going.
We're blocking.
Whatever you say.
Well.
Same thing said this morning, I suppose, Michael, they don't like, I know you're outnumbered, but.
My flag, me, guys.
This one? Is in my. All right, ready? Robert?
He says his own thing.
All right, they're busy shopping, too.
Yes, they are. They're still good.
We passed them.
Wait a minute. Is this my area right here?
You got you.
Oh, okay, all right. I thought I was going to have to stand. Bye, HR team. All right. Now we will go back to our agenda. County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1102, authorizing an agreement with NeoGov for use of the Agency 360 Training Evaluation Program in an amount not to exceed $5,497 through April 30th, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Common Police Court?
Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 1103, authorizing an agreement with Richardson Compensation Consulting LLC to provide compensation analysis services in an amount not to exceed $26,000 through November 30th, 2022.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Juvenile Court?
Under Juvenile Court, we have Resolution 1104, adopt the budget based on a grant with the Ohio Department of Youth Services for the ongoing operation of the Center for Adolescent Services in the amount of $5,6,893 through June 30th, 2023. We also have two authorization agreements, actually, one, two, three, five authorization agreements, excuse me, for healthcare services for youth committed to the Center for Adolescent Services through June 30th, 2023. Resolution 1105, Michelle Schultz, University Psychological Services Association, in the amount not to exceed $22,380. Resolution 1106, South Community, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $206,000. Resolution 1107, Dr. Dennis Bingham, in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Resolution 1103, Johnny Williams Myers III, Physician Assistant Certified, in an amount not to exceed $14,400. And Resolution 1109, ABC Therapies, in the amount not to exceed $200,000.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's Office?
Under the Treasurer's Office, we have Resolution 1110, authorizing the disbursement of funds from the Treasurer's Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection, or DTAC Fund, to the Montgomery County Land Reutilization Corporation in an amount not to exceed $1,817,912.94.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's Office?
Under the Treasurer's Office, we have Resolution 1110, authorizing the disbursement of funds from the Treasurer's Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection, or DTAC Fund, to the Montgomery County Land Reutilization Corporation in an amount not to exceed $1,817,912.94.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's Office?
Under the Treasurer's Office, we have Resolution 1110, authorizing the disbursement of funds from the Treasurer's Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection, or DTAC Fund, to the Montgomery County Land Reutilization Corporation in an amount not to exceed $1,817,912.94.
Move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And, you know, I just want to comment that that's so important.
It is.
So, I'm surprised you didn't jump right on that.
Well, I was going to say something.
Okay.
And, you know, a lot of counties have seen their DTAC go down, and we have not, thankfully, experienced that yet because that gives us the funding for the land bank to revitalize neighborhoods and do the important work that it does, so.
That's great.
Kudos to the Treasurer's Office for all their hard work and collection.
Commissioners, I'd also like to say thank you to you because you gave us the ability in the budget to do an allocation with the Treasurer so that we could send more money to the land bank. So, great job of our County Treasurer, but also a great job on you all and your leadership doing the county budget process, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, turn it over to you, County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. County Administrator, under the Clerk's Office, approve the minutes of the meetings on June 28th, 2022. Resolution 1111, approval of bills. Resolution 1112, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
Administrative Services, oh.
Oh, we moved to approve.
I got ahead of myself, I'm sorry.
That's never happened before.
Yeah, it's okay. All right.
You said, I seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
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 I do make mistakes.
It's okay, we all do.
All right, Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for your approval today. The first is 1113, this is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. 1114 authorizes an agreement with Comfort Systems USA for technology controls, preventative maintenance for the facilities management department in an amount not to exceed $47,250 through December 31st of 2022. 1115 approves a Courthouse Square vendors license agreement for rental space in Courthouse Square for the Wild Banana LLC through December 31st of 2022. 1116 amends the agreement with App Architecture for the rival building, fourth floor, public defender renovation project by increasing the original amount by $10,725 for a revised total of $319,525. 1117 rejects the proposals for the Safety Management System project for the Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management Department. 1118 solicits bids for the purchase of special waste hauling services for the Environmental Services Department. And 1119 requests proposals for the Risk Management Consultant Broker Services for the Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management Department. We also have one late item, which is 1143, and this approves the settlement agreement with, settlement agreement and release with the Rite Aid Corporation pursuant to the terms set forth in the settlement agreement.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Commissioners, I'd just like to say, on 1143, I'd like to thank the County Prosecutor and Ward and his team. I know they did an excellent job of working with multiple councils to move this piece, so thank you, Ward, and thank you to Prosecutor Hagg.
Michael, you want to explain what it is a little bit more?
Well, actually, we have our council here, so Ward, why don't you go ahead and weigh in?
Yes, Commissioners, thank you. We are, as you know, on behalf of you all, we have filed multiple lawsuits against different parties involved in the opioid epidemic, along with multiple other jurisdictions, and we've been part of certain settlements, most recently last year, for the One Ohio Settlement, of which I believe some money was just distributed this week. Also, on behalf of you all, we filed lawsuits against the pharmacy defendants also for their participation in the opioid epidemic, and this is the first settlement that we've received in that latest round of litigation. That money, 1.25 million minus our costs, will come directly to Montgomery County as opposed to being distributed throughout the state.
And that's separate from the One Ohio, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Completely separate.
Yes, ma'am.
Comes directly to us.
Yes.
Yep. They're good. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 1120, authorizing an agreement with Outdoor Enterprise LLC for construction of the RV Dump Station at their lowest and best bid of $190,899 through March 31st, 2023. 1121, approve the plan specifications and estimated cost of $8,500,000, and solicit bids for construction of the water facilities for the Eastern Regional Water Reclamation Facility Belt Filter Press Replacement Project. 1122, accept the subdividers contract from Divided Ridge Associates, LTD, for the Washington Trace Development, Section 16. 1123, accept the easement deed for water lines through property belonging to Washington Square Land Development LLC for the development of the Dorothy Lane Market Water Main relocate and record the same. Following two or two amend agreements, 1124, with Strand and Associates for preparation of detailed construction plans and specifications, and project management for the Habitat and Summit Med Lift Station Replacement Project by adding $82,000 to the original amount for a revised total of $331,800. And 1125, with Double J Construction, Inc., for construction of the Centerville Station Water Main Replacement Project by adding $17,166.65 to the original amount for a revised total of $250,784.65. The next two are to authorize 100% releases of the performance bonds and subdividers contracts with MI Homes of Cincinnati LLC. First is 1126, Windstone Development, Section 4, and the next is 1127, Windstone Development, Section 5. And the following four are to issue renewed authorizations to discharge wastewater permits to significant industrial users, discharging to the Western Regional Water Reclamation Facility. 1128 is with Clean Water Environmental LLC. 1129 with Fuyao Glass America, Inc. 1130, Violia ES Technical Solutions LLC, and 1131, West Carrollton Paper LLC.
Commissioners, before you approve, Matt, could you go over 1120, so the Commissioners and the public can understand the benefit that this is going to have, especially for our public that likes to go camping?
Sure.
And then also the work that we're doing out at Eastern, 1121.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the first is with the RV Dump Station, as you remember, we had closure of the accepted station on Dryden Road due to the aging infrastructure and the smart project. But we wanted to, and we could for a lot less, supply campers and RVs a solution at our Eastern location, so that'll be done later this year. And 1121 was for belt press filter, so I won't get into details, but it's part of the waste process. Those belt presses are 40 years old, and they kind of compress the sludge so we can remove that and take it away, so. It's aging infrastructure that we need to take care of, we don't want to have problems with that.
Thank you, Matt.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Tom?
Good afternoon. Under the Department of Job and Family Services, Resolution 1132 will authorize a memorandum of understanding with the Dayton Metropolitan Housing Authority, doing business to greater Dayton Premier Management, for the administration of the Housing and Urban Development's Family Unification Program through March 31st of 2027. 1133 is with Sunset Enterprises, doing business as Open Line, to provide background checks and multiple verifications for employment in an amount not to exceed $28,000 through December 31st of 2022. And then we have several agreements for substitute care through March 31st of 2024. 1134 is with Cedar Crest Hospital and RTC. 1135, Village Behavioral Health. 1136 with Advantage Family Outreach and Foster Care. I also have a late item under Job and Family Services. It is 1145, which will authorize an agreement with Sinclair Community College to provide support to the Fast Forward Center under the Out-of-School Youth Initiative in an amount not to exceed $300,000 through June 30th of 2023. And then under Stillwater Center, Resolution 1137 will extend the price agreement with Maxim Healthcare Staffing Services for temporary nursing services through January 31st of 2023.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Great.
Management and Budget, John, you have a late item?
Yes, I do, thank you. I have Resolution 1144, to establish a special revenue fund, Fund 210, Subfund 210001, known as the MC One Ohio Fund.
John, you want to update the Commissioners on some background on this?
Yes, as Ward has spoken, and we are receiving this week, we've been given notification through CCAO that the One Ohio Foundation will begin distributions this week for the first payment. This is the first payment of scheduled 18 payments over the next several years. So this will be the first payment is required by the Auditor of State that we set up a separate fund and subfund specifically for tracking our expenditures, future expenditures for further regulations of the memorandum of understanding that was signed, I believe, back in April.
I know they had some estimate amounts, but did we get the amount yet that we're getting?
Yes, we did. It is, this first payment is $446,000.
And that's just the first payment.
This is the first payment.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
Supposedly the payments from what we have will be front-loaded.
Yeah.
So, we think they'll kind of taper.
The next 17 after this, yeah.
Yes.
Yep. Just to add that, then there is a state fund, and Commissioner Dodge is representing us at the state foundation, and so the money will go to jurisdictions in Ohio, and then a big chunk of money, bigger, will go to the state of Ohio that then the foundation will distribute out, so.
And we're still meeting with the.
Trying to figure that one out.
There are store, yes, more details to be worked out.
And I do want to say, I'm really thankful for Ward and actually County Prosecutors across the whole state because there were no rules.
Right.
And had it not been for CCAO really digging into this, and Rachel at CCAO, we'd still be like, "What are we supposed to do?" So, we weren't the first state to start distributing, but we were close to one of the first, so congratulations and thank you, Ward.
And Commissioner Dodge will represent us well.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, she will.
Absolutely.
All right, now, yeah, all right.
We already did. No, we didn't?
No, we didn't.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Chris Williams, Business Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Business Services, Workforce Development, we have Resolution 1138, authorizing work experience and guidance program agreements with various local businesses and under Community and Economic Development. Resolution 1139, approving an economic development government equity edge agreement with the city of Dayton for Infinity Labs LLC project in an amount not to exceed $250,000, or 1.47% of the total project cost, whichever is less. 1140, authorizing an agreement with River Corridor Improvement Subdistrict of Miami Conservatory District for activities related to the Great Miami River Way Coalition in annual amount not to exceed $22,000 through May 31st, 2027. 1141, amends the agreement with the city of Kettering to provide rental assistance to households impacted by COVID-19 by adding $850,000 to the original amount for a revised to the original amount for a revised total of four million, four hundred and fifty thousand, and extending the term through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And lastly, eleven forty-two, publish a notice of public hearing to share the draft of Montgomery County Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Action Plan to discuss performance of previously funded CDBG home and ESG projects to take public comments and submit the plan to HUD at end of the comment period.
Well, before I move, you know, the, uh, Great Miami Riverway Coalition, that is just so great, and there's just getting to be so much excitement with going from, I think it's Sydney to Hamilton.
It might be Pickwa. I think it might go, it might be Pickwa all the way down.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be great.
Yeah.
It really is.
So this is great.
There are several, I'll second it, but there are several exciting things on here. Um, the thirty-nine, eleven thirty-nine, that Infinity Labs, the building that they are going to rehab is, is historical. It's the one that's right by, uh, Channel fourteen, sixteen.
Correct.
And it's, it's just been an eyesore for probably, I don't know, thirty, forty years. And they are going to go in there and just totally redo it. It's, it's an exciting project. I've, I've talked with the, the people that are doing it, and it'll be great. And then the other one is, I'm just so happy to see, Michael, we've talked about this several times, but Kettering Courts really taking the lead and coordinating all those dollars to keep people in their homes. And Kettering Courts, which is more than just Kettering, you know, it's like five jurisdictions, I think. And they're, they are really making a difference. And so we, we thank Kettering, uh, for that as well.
You're absolutely right, Commissioners. Uh, Kettering Court, all of our providers have done a fantastic job. Uh, Commissioners, you have taken the lead on rental assistance and put out more rental assistance, almost eighteen million dollars, uh, in rental assistance, uh, throughout this period, throughout the county. So, uh, all of our partners have done a great job. Kettering's leading on this. This is just fantastic to get this out to the public.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about that, that's amazing. We have, we have had people above water, right? I mean, thank goodness for the federal funds, but in this time of COVID, and then now everything else escalating, the cost of rent's out of control, and, um, this is good. So, um, congratulations to all of us.
Yes. Chris, you and the team, Tawana, great job. This is leading this effort. I know this is a lot of work, so thank you all.
You're welcome.
Yep. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Comments by citizens. Nancy? Come forward. You have, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
This is our new area. I like your new digs.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Nancy Keel. Uh, address, did you say? Three oh nine Hacker Road, Dayton, Ohio, four five four one five. Um, hello. Good to see y'all. I'm here, uh, representing the Clergy Community Coalition, and, um, I wanted to announce that on Monday, July eighteenth, we're holding a town hall meeting. Uh, guest speaker is, uh, Premier's Michael Reardon, CEO Michael Reardon. And, um, we're asking, inviting everybody here, everybody on, uh, community, community TV, um, to come to, to this, this, um, event. It's, uh, July eighteenth, which is this coming Monday, six-thirty at College Hill Community Church, one five four seven Philadelphia Avenue in Dayton. And, um, I'm going to hand you these flyers.
Mm-hmm.
And so I also, I kind of, I want to read, um, uh, what we wrote on the back of the flyers, just to share with you, uh, who the Clergy Community Coalition is. Uh, we formed in response to the announced closure of, uh, January, uh, twenty eighteen by Premier Health Partners of the closure and destruction of Good Samaritan Hospital, a two-million-square-foot full-service hospital that was a community anchor. The CCC responded with protests, community meetings, pressure on city, county, state officials, and the filing of a federal complaint with Health and Human Services Civil Rights Department, which asserted that the planned closure and demolition of Good Samaritan Hospital would have a racially discriminatory impact and would strike a devastating blow to the health care of African-Americans and women in, of Northwest Dayton. We were unable to prevent the closure and destruction of Good Samaritan Hospital, but we continue to work for a hospital and ask the question, why do white people get hospitals and black people get urgent cares? A gymnasium, outdoor sports field, weight training, competition pool, urgent care, goodwill, um, are all what's being, uh, presented to us by Premier right now, then they're, they're all great, but you can't have a baby in an urgent care and we can't save lives, uh, without an emergency center. In addition to what Premier is providing at the Northwest Health and Wellness Campus, uh, is a medical center with emergency trauma, mental health, birthing center, um, out, outpatient obstetrics, uh, and hospital beds to support this. Um, in addition to this, we also wrote a letter to Michael Reardon, and we've, we asked community members to sign that, and, uh, and we sent those to you. Unfortunately, you did not sign them, and it was a great disappointment to us. We're asking that you would still strongly consider signing this letter, Commissioners, um, and we would invite you to come on July eighteenth. You know, you're very welcome to come. So these, this is the letter to Michael Reardon, and, uh, we very much like you to read it. It's a hard copy, and just take your time and, but, but it's on DocuSign, it's on your mail. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, our male and female leadership academies teamed up to provide community service last week, and it was pretty fantastic. Uh, they went to the Dayton Food Bank, packed more than two hundred, uh, boxes of food for local families. Uh, the leadership academies and, and our mentor programs for young men and women between the ages of fourteen and sixteen. And each teen is paired with a me- mentor that helps guide them and allows them to grow and to develop into our future leaders. So, uh, this is a great program. You can find out more about the program at thejobcenter.org backslash youth. Again, thejobcenter.org backslash youth. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And you know, those leadership academies, um, both the, the males now have like, is it two years?
Yeah, we're in year two.
And then we just attended, um, as you mentioned, the one-year, um, graduation on Saturday. And, you know, all evidence shows that, uh, when a, a young person, or really anybody, any age, if you have a mentor, uh, but especially young people, uh, the statistics just go way off of how, um, what a difference it can make and the healthier, better choices that those young people all make, uh, by just having one person who believes in them and that they can, um, really bounce ideas off of. So, uh, we were really thrilled to see it be expanded to females as well. And, um, I have to say that they, uh, selected an individual who was one of the mentors, whose own life story quite inspiring, who gave the keynote address. And, uh, her remarks were quite compelling, I think. Uh, you know, she's lived this, and, um, her daughter was also in the program, so it wa- it was a very.
Special.
Very special. You say that a lot, but, um, some really stand out, and, um, I just think that she's a living example of what we are trying to, um, really facilitate and boost and increase the likelihood of, uh, our young men and women, regardless of zip code or regardless of circumstances, to have a chance to be their best selves. And, you know, they're, you know, I am, serve as a mentor in college promise, and I think as a community, we're extremely fortunate. I mean, I think we've really added to the portfolio of, uh, uh, leadership, uh, type of programs for young people. Um, I don't think you, I really don't think, given the needs of our community, we could ever have too many. But I think our, um, hats off to, uh, the whole team. Uh, they just do a stellar job from the get-go, and, uh, they instill in the young people, and I can say the young men, you know, they show up for each other. Uh, they really, you know, it's about dress and all of that, of how you change that perception and you live up to what you're dressed like, and they look sharp, and they, um, are motivated. And I thi- I think we are changing lives. It'll take years from now to be able to tell the difference, but it is truly remarkable. We had twenty-three young ladies, uh, graduate on Saturday.
And one joined us from Zoom, on Zoom, from, she was down at Fisk?
I think so. Yeah, she was, or.
No, Spelman.
Spelman. She was down.
She was in Atlanta at Spelman.
Yeah.
And she was already taking classes.
Taking college classes.
But she wanted to be part of the graduation, so.
And we commented on this on Saturday, but the girls, women, looked so good. You know, they get, they get blazers with the Montgomery County emblem on it, and, um, they're just so mature, when you think some of them are only sophomores. But, um, because it's for fourteen to eighteen. Um, but Carolyn, as you were talking, I mean, we're really hopeful that we're breaking this cycle on so many people. And the woman that spoke that Carolyn mentioned, uh, grew up in Youngstown, and, um, her mother basically said she was going to amount to nothing.
Yeah.
She, she has worked for, um.
Social Security.
Social Security for over twenty years. She's, she's a leader there, and she's a basketball coach at Wayne, uh, female basketball coach. So her story was so inspiring, and the girls were, you know, all engaged watching her, and she's also a mentor. But, um, we can't thank our mentors enough. That was what I was referring to when, when I thanked Joyce.
And Deb Decker.
Yeah, and Deb, that's right. Deb's been a mentor as well.
And Alum isn't here, but Alum is, uh, and who else?
Yeah.
Anybody else here?
In our men's program, a lot of our employees, um, have been mentors, and so that's great. And I just want to add about the young men at the Fatherhood Banquet, they were escorts. They escorted everybody to their seats, and, and they're such, they have such great manners, and it's just, I think our program, you're right, I mean, we could, we could triple it and still not touch as many as we'd like, but twenty-three is a pretty good number.
Right.
Yeah, so thank you.
And one thing I noticed, they're going to be friends for a long, long time. You know, you could tell with the girls that they.
Well, we also, each one of them.
Great relationship with each other.
Yeah. Each one of them gets a laptop, and so that was pretty exciting for them, too.
Sure.
Yeah.
Our programs, Commissioners, have also become a national example and a model throughout the state. So, you know, thanks for your support, too. It's not often that you get a chance to launch some programs like this in government. So, thank you.
Well, and honestly, I don't have it with me, but the, the cohort wrote a creed.
Oh, yeah, it's, I have it.
And it is something that we could all live by, and, um, so that, that was awesome. I mean, you, can you tell that we were pretty inspired by the whole thing? We're not making this up.
Chris, will you tell your team that? They did great. Did great.
Always, they do a great job.
They do.
They do.
They do.
Love Marveen. So, yeah, so we should post that creed, because I thought that was pretty amazing.
We should.
And the young ladies were the ones that wrote it.
Yep.
All right. Cheer, cheering. What you got to say in addition?
Well, speaking of young people, um, we have a big event coming up next week, uh, our Youth Leadership Summit, and we haven't had it for a couple of years, but I attended the last one, and it was so great to see these young people really excited, uh, learning. Um, we have three hundred and fifty registered now. Uh, Marveen would like to see, I think, four hundred, is that right, Chris? So we have openings, and that's our Youth Leadership Summit. It's July twenty-third from nine to five, and it's for teens fourteen and sixteen. And, um, it, it, we have great speakers and, and, you know, leadership that comes in and, and talks.
Breakouts.
Breakouts. Um, and it, and it really provides them with resources that they need, um, to be resilient, but to also become our next generation of leaders. And, um, they'll have sessions on mental health and financial literacy, and it will feature, and I've heard this guy's name, I, I meant Saturday to go look him up. He's one of America's top motivational speakers, Jeremy Anderson. Um, and I guess youth just love this guy. So again, that's next Saturday, the twenty-third, starting at nine, right across the street at Sinclair.
All right. Do you have to have a reservation?
Mm-hmm.
By now?
Okay.
Yes.
So there's still time.
Plenty of places.
Exactly.
Okay, well, finally, if you have styrofoam, start gathering it and get ready to recycle it, because Environmental Services Team, Matt, is holding its quarterly styrofoam recycling event on this Saturday, this Saturday, from nine to one o'clock at Welcome Stadium. Over the past two years, we have collected more than ten thousand pounds, ten thousand pounds of styrofoam, because this is a great way to properly dispose of the material, because styrofoam does not break down when it's at the landfill. Thanks to our friends at Echo Development, the styrofoam will be processed to become items such as surfboards, picture frames, and much more.